Very good. We'll now start the regular city council meeting for the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary of Quorum, still present? Very good. Seeing, moving on. Tonight's invocation and pledge of allegiance will have a pledge and prayer by Scott Basso, Pastor Care Programs and Global Missions of Founder United Methodist Church. Pastor?
Thank you, city council members. Will you please bow with me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day of life that was never promised. I thank you, Lord, for the city council of Jersey Village and the leadership. Thank you for the decisions they're going to be making tonight, Father. I ask you to give them the vision, the knowledge, the guidance, and the direction to do what's best for the entire community. Be with each one of the members and their families. And as the school year starts soon, Father, please be with all the children of Jersey Village. Keep them safe and sound and bring them home to their families every night. Be with this meeting tonight. Show us what you have in mind, Lord. In your son's holy name I pray. Amen. Now, if you do the pledge of allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much, pastor. Moving to item C on our agenda this evening, the City of Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention Districts. Item one, receive the adopted fiscal year 2019 budget for the Village Crime Control and Prevention District, CCPD. I don't think any action needs to be taken on this. We have the budget before us this evening. Item two, conduct a public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. I'll now call to order this public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present it to the city secretary. The purpose of today's hearing is to give all interested parties the right to appear and hear, to be heard concerning the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. I would now like to request Chief of Police Eric Forster to summarize the subject of this public hearing. Chief?
Mayor, councilors, we spoke about earlier, it's the same budget as presented before with the original supplementals and the original dollar amounts. No change since last time.
Any questions for chief? Anybody wishing to speak about the CCPD budget? Seeing, seeing that there's no one else desiring to speak, I'll now close the public hearing on the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's adopted budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Moving to item three on our agenda this evening, consider resolution number 2018-49 adopting the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District's budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Any comments or questions on the resolution? Seeing none, looking for a motion on the resolution?
Move that we approve resolution 2018-49 to approve the Jersey Village Crime Control and Prevention District for 2018 to 2019 budget.
Second? There's been a motion second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That'll actually close item C this evening, which will actually move us into item D, presentations. Presentation of the Employee of the Month, City Manager Austin Blyce.
Mayor, councilors, citizens of Jersey Village, tonight I am proud to announce that the August 2018 Employee of the Month is Donna Jin. If you'd like to join us up here, actually. And Isabel, you too. She's always taken the willingness to take on difficult projects, and her insistence with the preparation of the U.S. 290 Expansion reimbursement packages for both Segment Six and Seven was one large recent project that played a major role and that you played a major role in, that is very well recognized by the city. As the mayor and councilors and the citizens know, that was worth several millions worth of dollars from reimbursement for the state that Donna played a huge role in. She's worked for the city for almost 12 years and has always been dependable, efficient, and unfailingly punctual. To quote her supervisor who nominated Ms. Jin, "I have never had an employee who gives as much attention to detail as she does. It's my great honor to present Donna Jin as the August 2018 Employee of the Month."
That comes the fun part. Picture time. All right, very good. Well, moving to citizen comments this evening. Citizens who've signed the card and wish to speak to the city council, be heard at this time, in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information and existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments at city council. First card I have is a special guest, Precinct Four Commissioner Jack Kegel. Good to have you here.
I'm a little taller than most of you except for Mr. Singleton, perhaps. Mayor, council members, honored citizens of Jersey Village and honored citizens of Harris County, Precinct Four. It is a delight and a privilege to be here tonight to address you for a few moments, to let you know a few things that are going on in your precinct here. Now, you are a jewel amongst the cities that are within Precinct Four. We have a piece of Katy, if you're going off of I-10. If you come on up to 240, to 290, we have, of course, have Jersey Village. If you go over to 249, we have lovely Tomball. Off of 45, we have two pseudo-cities, and that would be the Woodlands, which is a township, and we also have Spring, which I'm not sure what Spring is. But they have a number of different governing boards. And then, as you continue over to 59, we also have two cities, which would be Humble. And then, the City of Houston, as we enter into Kingwood. We also pick up pieces of the City of Houston down towards 59 inside the loop, because we go, your precinct goes all the way down to the Heights as well as Humble. We have Jersey Village, but we also have River Oaks. And so, we have quite a bit of expanse that we all share. But one thing that we know within all of these cities, the seven cities, and then that's 30 percent of the precinct are in these seven cities, 70 percent are those who are not in a city, but who depend upon the wise and goodness that you guys do in your day-to-day activities, because they are in the muds and in the associations surrounding them. And so, our cities are the lights on the hill that allow others to go, and so, our partnerships are important. Those partnerships are more important this day than any other. As you know, Harris County has put on for a bond proposition for our floods. If you want to talk to someone who understands what floods are like, talk to someone that's lived in Jersey Village over the last few years. And I'm delighted that in Harvey, which was a 2,000-year flood event, nestled after three, that's a 2,000-year flood event, nestled after three 500-year flood events, which have been following five 100-year flood events. For those of you that know your biblical history, we're good to the time of Moses now. With regard to our flood events, Jersey Village in this last one fared very, very well. Tax Day flood was a bit rough with 230 homes, I believe, but our investments that we've been making with regard to our watersheds paid off during the 2,000-year event where we had 14 months of rain in five days, the largest rain event in North American history. And so, I've been delighted that in the midst of our recovery period, I did not have to worry about Jersey Village, because you guys were able to fare quite well in this particular flood event. But our job is not done. With hundreds of thousands of homes that were impacted, almost 7 percent of our homes that were impacted, and the watersheds that are there, a lot more work needs to be done. And with research, and with study, and with diligence, I have been taught a very important feature, which I was sharing with a few of you earlier, and that is that water flows downhill. And as we now know that water flows downhill, you'll note, and I hand it to the members of city council and will pass it out to others, that the proposed bond propositions deal quite a bit with White Oak Bio. Our local funding or the proposed proportionality out of the bond, that is a county-wide bond, 11 of the 22 watersheds are in Precinct Four. On White Oak, we are anticipating out of the bond to spend 180 million. However, our partner funding, that would be matching funding on White Oak, would make that benefit to be a $555 million bond, a half billion dollars in the White Oak watershed. Now, some may say some of these projects are not exactly within the city limits of Jersey Village, therefore, why should I not support it? But notice earlier I said water flows downhill, and if you can attack the water when it's above the hill and hold it there before it comes to where you are, and if we can clear out the drainage that comes below you down the hill, that makes you a safer and better place. And so, as we move forward, we'll continue to want to invest with you and show you how we can work better together. On the generalized side, I do want to draw your attention to one item where if you look at countywide projects, and now on the fourth item down, it is partnership projects with municipalities, authorities, and other districts in Harris County. If our bond passes, and you can vote tomorrow in this very building, if you, if it passes, we're looking at spending $175 million in partnerships, and therefore, propositions that you may have, that you want to spend with us together, we may be able to work on. So, to end the way that I began, water flows downhill, but friendships are what we can use, and partnerships are what we can use to overcome them. Thank you for being who you are. We look forward to working with you, continuing to working with you, and being in your assistance as we are in this together, all seven of the Precinct Four cities and the not-in-a-city region, as well as the rest of the county. God bless you, and thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. And we also agree with Jersey Village and River Oaks being set in the same breath. We do. Thank you very much. The next comment card I have is Jim Fields.
Move the mic back down. I don't know who's taller. How tall are you, Mr. Councilman Singleton?
I'm tall.
Really? My goodness. I saw you the other day directing, oh, excuse me. My name is James Fields, and I live at 16413 St. Hillier. Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing me to participate and comment in tonight's meeting. First one is pool safety. I want to personally thank Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Alfaro, and City Manager, Mr. Blyce, for engaging to working forward on pool safety. We had a near drowning in July, and they followed up on it. It's very important. Mr. Alfaro has inherited some of these problems. We had a long-time issue where adults swim, we didn't have proper coverage, and they're addressing that. And I want to thank you again, Mr. Alfaro, for calling my wife about the near drowning incident, as she was the person that actually saved the young child. The second thing is on the purchase, the land purchase. I hope in the future, before we spend anything over a million dollars on a land purchase, that we at least put a poll out to the citizens to see what they think, at least give information out to them, because I don't think next door is the best way to get the information out. And to give you an example, I'm just going to lead into the board adjustment. I went to the board adjustment meeting. People are thinking that that was a meeting to stop the building of a building over there, when in actuality it was just an adjustment for a hardship issue, and they're not realizing that the zones have been there for years. They have a right to build that. So, anyway, thank you very much, and I'm going to, the emails and stuff I'm going to give to the city secretary for public records. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor Lee Beasley?
Dear Mayor and City Council, can everybody, did everybody hear me? Okay. Thank you for letting me present my concerns to the city council this evening. I'm not an attorney. I've done my best to prepare these opinions and facts. As you may recall, I brought to your attention on several occasions some of the problems in Jersey Village. Also, my husband reviewed the Jersey Village numbers related to the golf course to attempt to alert you to the financial problems of the golf course. Some of these previous problems include problems with irregularities with our recent election, the bailout of the Jersey Meadow Golf Course at more than 600,000 when debt service is included, and where very few residents play golf, the lack of current training of the Jersey Meadow Golf Course staff with the AEDs and CPR. This might be a lawsuit waiting to happen. The need to shut down the golf cart bridge near the golf course due to the potential of the bridge collapsing. This might be a lawsuit waiting to happen. The need for a feasibility study for the new golf course clubhouse. To add to these recent issues, the city council conducted a meeting, though technically fulfilled the Texas Opens Meeting Act by posting the meeting 72 hours in advance, certainly, in my opinion, did not fulfill the spirit of the Texas Opens Meeting Act. I understand that it was posted in an area by City Hall on a bulletin board that most citizens didn't even know existed. Also, I'm not in the habit of checking the city website daily for meetings that I don't know are going to be posted. In my opinion, it appeared the city council wanted to purchase land that might someday be Jersey Crossing's version of Love Canal due to the serious possibility that it has hazardous chemicals on it and other serious issues like potential for flooding. In addition to this, the meeting occurred at 6:00 PM when most, on Monday, when most residents are not even home from work. Actually, it didn't matter anyway, because no one knew about the meeting through official channels, and no one was allowed to comment on the purchase of this land. My understanding is that Jersey Village had a lawsuit, lost a lawsuit when planning and zoning altered the prop, I'm sorry, after the properties were sold to a developer, Jones Road Limited. This special meeting was to discuss and approve the purchase by the City of Jersey Village. This purchase was for the sum of $5,250,000 pursuant to an agreement to settle the claims asserted by Jones Road Holdings Limited in cause number 1061305, Jones Road Holding Limited versus City of Jersey Village, Texas County Civil Court. The city approved to pay $2,323,792.24 more than the HCAD market value plus real estate commission. This all seems very strange to me. And now, we have a dog park. Has anyone considered that a dog park will be a way for all the dogs who visit the park to be exposed to all of disease and germs that the unsuspecting pet owners never considered when they brought the pets to the dog park? This might be another lawsuit waiting to happen. And see the abstract of the article below from the Journal of Environmental and Public Health published in August 2017, Urban Dog Parks and Canine Parasite Sources. Dog parks represent a recent trend in Western countries, enabling owners to spend quality time with their pets in a controlled environment. Despite their growing popularity, few studies have been performed to date on these parks to investigate dog intestinal parasitic infections and soil contamination. The present study examined 369 fecal and 18 soil samples collected from three dog parks in Greater Lisbon, Portugal. Additionally, 122 interviews were performed. Anyway, the bottom line is, they are a problem for potential infections. So, I ask our mayor and our city fathers, why do you want to schedule a meeting that no one can attend, and they don't know it is occurring anyway? Why do you continue to bail out a golf course for non-residents? Why do you not conduct a feasibility study for the new golf course clubhouse that would be funded by the hotel occupancy tax? Why do you want a dog park so badly that it might make lots of dogs sick, and the owners will have difficulty managing the vet bills? Why do you buy a property that looks like it could be our version of Love Canal? To make matters worse, you do not inform the residents in time to plan to attend the meeting, except they can't come because they don't know anything about it, and they aren't home from work. And then, you leave the comment section off of the agenda, so no one can speak up about it. Why do you conduct our city business this way? I recommend that all safety issues be addressed appropriately. I recommend that we do not proceed further with the dog park. I recommend that the city have an independent audit that is conducted by an agency approved by the citizens, not the Jersey Village city staff. I recommend that we no longer bail out the golf course. I recommend that we conduct a feasibility study for the golf course clubhouse if we have to have the golf course. I recommend that we stop the purchase of the Jersey Crossing land. Thank you very much. I am a nurse, a schoolteacher, and I have an MBA, so I do know a little bit about business, about health, and of course, I always bring my handouts. Thank you.
Susan Edwards?
I'm Susan Edwards. I live at 16001 Jersey Drive. And I just want to thank the city and the staff and the council. I organized the water aerobics up at the pool, and so, when I approached Mr. Alfaro, whom I normally call Jason, he was brand-new here, and so, he didn't even know that water aerobics existed, but he did find out from other avenues what it was all about. So, we've had a great season, and we are looking very forward to entering into our September season, so I want to thank everybody who has made that possible for us. I also want to thank the fact that we've had another great pool season with our pool manager, who has worked very successfully with Mr. Alfaro and the rest of the city and Mr. Blyce. And I do know that there have been instances where they've all had to come together, and, but they're right on whenever there's any occasion that they have to come together and work. The pool has been very well-received this year, and the splash pad has also. I've seen more people and more young families up there than I think I've seen in the last several years. And we even have a lot more non-residents coming. And what I am hearing is that they are finding that our pool is cleaner, nicer, and that's why they're coming in to use our pool. I've always said, because I've been around for a long time, as our mayor knows, that we have a fantastic facility, and we need to keep it that way. And anyway, I just want to thank everybody, and all of our water aerobics people are looking very forward to being able to come through September. I know that they won't all be able to, but they're very thankful that we do have the September season to look forward to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Frank Marr.
Mayor and council, my name is Frank Marr. I live at 16514 St. Hillier. I've lived out here and been involved with the fire department for over 40 years, and I've been steaming and brewing since last month's meeting. I got a copy of the public comments, and I want to make some comments on it. First of all, a volunteer fire department can't save your house, only the house next door. That's word for word. Tell me the last time a house was burnt down in Jersey Village. I can tell you in the last four or five years, we've made several structural fires that have less than $10,000 worth of damage. People making these statements don't understand what they're talking about. Fire departments don't have the training to fight complex fires. Most of our members are either certified or in the process of being certified by the state in firefighting, or EMS in the state, and they take the national registry just to respond and ride on our units. We train every Tuesday night, and we require our members to make certain amount of meetings. I want to make another comment. AEDs, the golf courts, I just heard it again, the pool, they're out there, they have been trained to use them, or they're in the process of being trained to use them. Another false statement. Hire more full-time professional firefighters. I'll put our members up against any departments, and I'd like to know what the definition of professional is. Volunteers, they don't have the training, and their first responsibility is to their full-time jobs. I think our first responsibility for anybody volunteered or paid is to our family and our homes. Councilman Wubenhurst is a member of our department. He got flooded and left his house to come up and help other citizens, and left his family there. About two months ago, on a Sunday morning, about 6:00 in the morning, we get a call for a major accident on the freeway. Police department's there. I have to say, the police department and the fire department are like peanut butter and jelly. We just work and make it work good. There was a lady with three children under five years old heading from Florida to Austin, was in an accident, kind of a minor accident. They were trying to get her hooked up, and we said, "Leave her alone." We got the jaws cut out a piece that was hanging down, so she could get on the road. A single mother with three children under five, been on the road all night, and we looked down at the tires. They're not bald, they got threads on them. Between the police and the firefighters on the scene, without making a big to-do about it, we collected over $125, escorted her up to the tire factory to make sure she could get tires and get on the road. Our families, business comes first, your job comes first. My wife's not here, but she'll tell you how many times I've left birthdays, anniversaries, school events, and I can say that for any of our members in the department. I've been steaming for a month over this. We don't ask for no thanks, but we ask for truth. When a statement's made, I want it to be truthful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Frank. Dawn Eubanks.
Thank you, Frank. You, I want to second everything you said there. I'm Dawn Eubanks. I live at 16302 Wall Street. I've lived in Jersey Village now almost eight years. I moved here from Sugar Land, Texas. I moved here because my brother and his family lived here, and I knew Jersey Village to be a community. A year ago today, I heard on the radio that there was this little storm out in the Gulf, and we need to kind of pay attention to it. I saw our police department, I saw our fire department, I saw the citizens jump into action to get ready. I saw neighbors helping neighbors to raise furniture just in case. We were ready. We had the fire department and the police department lived at the fire station and police station. I know for four days, and some for longer than that. But I also saw community, and I saw people working together. In the last few months, I haven't seen community. Our police department and our fire department and our city services are all still there doing their job, but I don't see community. I see people fighting each other. I see bullying. And if you don't like my idea, I'm going to dump trash in your yard. Before the election, I had people pounding on my door at 9:00 at night, demanding to know why I had a particular councilman's sign in my yard, demanding that I change my vote. That's not neighbors being neighbors. That's not community. That's the way the people in the swamp in Washington, DC act, not the way people in Jersey Village act. And I'm just asking and making a plea to my fellow citizens to get the community back, to start acting as neighbors and working together. And yes, if you have a complaint or a problem, you have a right to voice your complaint or your problem, but don't try to bully, and don't try to yell your way into getting what you want just because you're louder than the guy next door. We need to work together as a team, and that's all that I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. That was the last citizen comment card that I have this evening. This will move directly into the city manager's report. Austin Blyce.
Mayor and councilors, the report is before you tonight, and staff is here to answer any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions for Austin?
Actually, Austin, I took-
Actually, Austin, I took great pride and I was glad to see that our golf course appears if you take the depreciation out, because it's a non-cash expense. If you take the depreciation out, it appears as though our golf course on the year is in fact profitable on a cash basis. Is that correct?
Yeah, by approximately $15,000 if I remember right. Through the month of July, we were profitable by $15,000.
Please pass along my congratulations to the golf course staff.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, move directly into the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and place it into the regular session? Seeing none, looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's been a motion, seconds. Are there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Regular session, item one, consider resolution number 2018-50, setting the maximum proposed ad valorem tax rate, setting dates for any necessary public hearings on the proposed tax rate, setting the date city council will adopt the fiscal year 2018 to 2019 ad valorem tax rate. Isabel Cato.
Ah, yes. During the 2013 legislative session, SP 1510 was passed, which required the municipality change the notice requirements for the truth in taxation process. In the past, municipalities were required to publish multiple notices at different stages and days during the truth in taxation process. This notice includes the notice of effective and rollback tax rate, the notice of public hearings on tax increase, and notice of tax revenue increase. SP 1510 combined all these notices in one notice. However, the new law requires that the new notice be published in the city official's newspaper, no later than September 1st. Since meeting the September 1st deadline proved problematic for some cities, HB 1953 was passed during the 2015 legislative session. HB 1953 provides that the notice is to be published no later than the later of September 1st or the thirty day after the first day that the taxing unit received its certified appraisal rolls. The effective date of HB 1953 was January 1st, 2016. In approving this resolution, council is not setting the tax rate for fiscal year 2018, 2019, as that would be accomplished during October 15, 2018 meeting. Approving this resolution merely states that city council will not see a tax rate of .7425 per 100 taxable value. Additionally, the board approving the resolution must be a record vote. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Isabel?
Isabel, Harris County hasn't certified the tax roll yet, right?
We should get the numbers tomorrow, hopefully.
Hopefully.
I think we will.
And just to clarify, Isabel, we're talking about setting a maximum rate. We could conceivably in October set a tax rate lower than the .7425, which is our current tax rate, correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions for Isabel or staff? Looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move we approve resolution number 2018-50.
I'll second.
Gary, I'm going to actually, I need that resolution read verbatim, actually.
And I memorized it.
There's been a motion, second, but Gary's going to have to follow through on the motion per Robert's Rules of Order.
I move we approve resolution number 2018-50, setting the maximum proposed ad valorem tax rate, setting dates for any necessary public hearings on the proposed tax rate, and setting the date city council will adopt the fiscal year 2018 to 2019 ad valorem tax rate.
Second, that corrected motion.
There's been a motion and second. This is going to be a roll call vote. I will now call upon each council member by name to take the record vote. Once your name is called, answer aye to signify your approval of the motion or nay to signify your disapproval. Councilmember Mitchell, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Holden, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Warren, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wobenhorst, state your vote.
Aye.
The motion carries. That'll take us into item two, consider ordinance number 2018-16, amending the traffic study fund budget of the city of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017 and ending September 30th, 2018, and authorizing the completion of an engineering study in connection with the red light camera program. Chief Forrester.
Mayor and councillor, these funds are requested are to conduct an engineering study for the eleven previously-held locations for the red light camera system. At direction of council, staff looked at this and we realized this is probably going to be the best way to move forward. These funds are out of the traffic safety fund, not out of the general fund, and we like to move forward with this engineering study on the eleven locations for feasibility.
Chief, one question. Of the eleven intersections, were those the existing eleven intersections or is it the intersections we had plus some additional ones or is it different intersections or are they just a repeat of what we previously had?
These are all the previous locations that we had before, no additions.
And chief, these would be necessary prior to reinstallation of the cameras?
Oh, yes. I believe that is the most prudent way to do. You've had a major redesign of the road, the sightlines are different. There are so many variables that have changed over the time, I think it'd be prudent to re-engineer. I'd do it this time, yes.
Any other questions for chief? Looking for a motion on the ordinance.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2018-16.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item three, consider ordinance number 2018-17, amending the asset forfeiture fund budget of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017 and ending September 30th, 2018, and authorizing the purchase of a speed monitoring trailer and associated equipment as permitted by chapter 59 of the Code of Criminal Procedure and providing for severability. Chief Forrester, chief of police.
Mayor and councillor, I apologize for not holding this over until budget, but I think we need to move fast on this. This is for a speed trailer with analytics software included. Our current speed trailer is old, tired, and seen its better days, so we need to get a new one. This one is a used model, demo model from the company. It's going to save us several thousand dollars. It's also on a state buyboard price and I think this was a really good purchase and I think we need to move forward with a new trailer. Again, these funds are out of our seizure fund, not out of the general fund. Thank you.
Chief, anything that this proposed trailer does that our current trailer doesn't do?
Works.
That's a good start.
Yes, there's an improved analytic software set with it, but again, the main things we look at are traffic flow, peak flow, eighty-fifth percentile, they can all give you that. It's a prettier picture, but the machine works a little better. It has some preset stuff that we can do with it and I think for the money, it's well worth it. As much as we use it, we do use it a lot.
Isabel, can you explain to me the accounting going on here, this asset forfeiture fund that you're amending?
Okay, that's a special revenue fund and that's monies that are received that can only be used for police department equipments or programs, yeah.
Why are you amending it?
We have to amend it because it's a governmental fund. It's not an enterprise fund. If it would have been an enterprise fund, we don't need to amend it, but since it's a governmental fund, we have to amend that line item.
I understand that. How does the asset forfeiture fund play a part in this? You're purchasing an asset here, right?
Sir, that's a great question. We actually set the budget during the regular session, so you've already approved the budget for this fiscal year, so to make any change to that budget now, we have to go back and amend the budget. If it weren't not for the time crunch, I would have just held it over till the next budget, but we need to get this purchase done prior to, so we have to amend the already fixed budget to encumber those funds now.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out, we're dealing with an asset forfeiture when you're making a purchase. You get where I'm coming from?
Yes, the asset forfeiture fund are funds that we got in asset forfeitures through drug cases or other criminal cases where we actually seize the funds, so those funds are put into a special account separate from the city's funds. We still have to seek your permission to spend those, but it's not general fund.
I got it, thank you.
Any other questions for chief? Looking for a motion on the ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance 2018-17.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Item four, consider resolution number 2018-51, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with PS Lightwave Incorporated for Internet Access Service. Bob Levens.
Mayor and councillor, this is a proposal to enter into a new three-year contract. Our current contract for internet services is provided by Comcast. That contract is expiring. We went back to Comcast, looked at renewing and based upon their pricing, we decided to go out and look for some more cost-effective solutions and PS Lightwave was the one that came in with the lowest cost. This would be for another three-year contract through them.
Questions for Bob?
How much of a speed increase are we looking at here?
Sir, what is that, sir?
How much of a speed increase from Comcast to PS Lightwave for the circuit, I guess you could say?
Well, PS Lightwave is going to give us 200 megabit on a dedicated fiber connection that's already coming into the police station. Greater Harris County 911 is using them as one of their internet providers and for a private network back to Greater Harris County 911, so we'd be piggybacking in on that, so it makes it very cost-effective for them to come in and just turn up some dark fiber for us.
So their medium is fiber?
Yes, it'll be fiber, dedicated fiber for us. It's not shared network or anything like that, it's dedicated just for our use and of course, the same fiber cables being used by Greater Harris County 911.
Okay, well, that's a good recommendation. So basically, that's what you're going on to judge their dependability or you have other sources?
I'm kind of going on talking with Greater Harris County 911 on their dependability. I've also talked to PS Lightwave about their resources and their endeavor that they had back during Hurricane Harvey, to how well they handled their customers. They've got a lot of extensive documentation on their website on things they did for customers back during Harvey. I think that Comcast has been an excellent vendor. Their pricing just is not cost-effective anymore and I think Comcast has probably got the dedication there and the better uptime potential. We know what their history is, we've had them for a while, but PS Lightwave's been running Greater Harris County 911 for a couple of years now and they haven't been having any trouble with it. They've not had any outages or anything with it.
That's good. I remember 2001 and what happened in Houston with the internet then.
It can happen. I mean, we lost internet service from Comcast during Harvey. I mean, so it's nothing that's going to be guaranteed. There is some service level agreements in there where they will give us some potential cost savings if it's down for a certain period of time and certain levels where we can escalate the call and a variety of things if we do have problems with service.
Yeah, I understand, but what they reimburse you isn't anywhere near the real cost of that loss of service when you need it.
And I think in all cases, the reimbursement is so minimal, it's just there as a part of their contractual agreement saying that if we don't meet our 100% uptime, we're going to reimburse you something, but it's not going to offset any costs. Comcast didn't, none of them that I've dealt with will.
Do we have any kind of redundant service? Do we have, are we required by any sort of statute to have a backup redundant connection?
We actually have dedicated fiber with AT&amp;T. Our voice-over IP phone system comes in with that with a dedicated data connection on that point as well, so that's a backup solution for us. It's not running nearly as fast, but it would get us in the event of an issue.
Any other questions for Bob? Thanks, Bob. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Approve resolution 2018-51.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, seconds. Are there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Mayor and councillor comments next before we adjourn to executive session. So I'll start with Councilman Wobenhorst at the end.
I have no comments tonight.
Saw some voted stickers today and just to remind everybody, there's an election going on right now. Thanks for those that have voted either way. Just participating in your civic duty is something that not enough people do.
I just wanted to second Mrs. Edwards' comments about the pool. We were finally able to go check out the splash pad and we went to a birthday party and council member Singleton and I had a cannonball contest off of the diving board. That was fun. So that was, I agree, the facilities are fantastic, that diving board will stay.
Who won that?
I don't know. We didn't really determine who won that one. Okay. So I just want to recommit to making sure that that facility is kept up, that that's a childhood thing I remember and it's something that, you know, my kids are enjoying and it'll keep on going. So thank you for those comments, those are very, very well put. Thank you.
I just want to thank Frank Marr for your comments today. I agree with you 100%. I think we have a fantastic police department and a fantastic fire department that do a great job and I think that the volunteers are the backbone of that department. I will say that it's unfortunate that some comments were made that were less than glowing in that regard, but I think that they are a very tiny minority in a community that greatly values you guys, so thank you very much.
I want to thank everybody for their attendance this evening. I want to thank some members of our Boy Scouts. I want to thank Commissioner Kegel for his comments and his updates on the flooding situation in Harris County and Precinct Four specifically. I also want to thank Chief Marr for his comments this evening. The Jersey Village Fire Department and the police department are some of the core elements why people come and live in the city and they represent us very well and they're just great to have and we thank them for all their service as well. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the council comments. We're going to recess the regular session and then council's going to adjourn to executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 7:57 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations in connection with the following item. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087, conduct deliberations regarding economic development negotiations to locate a retail service center within Jersey Village. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
All right, we're going to bring the regular session back into order. The closed session was adjourned at 8:15 PM and no official action or vote was taken, conducted during the closed session. Regular sessions continued. Item M1, consider resolution number 2018-52, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Argos USA LLC relating to the provision of development services within the city. City manager, Austin Police.
Mayor and councillor, before you tonight, we have a resolution to approve a chapter 380 agreement with Argos USA LLC. This chapter 380 agreement will be in effect for ten years. The city would reimburse the company 80% of sales tax revenue generated, up to an annual total of 1.25 million and a grand total of no more than $10 million over the ten-year period. Well, it's anticipated the city will bring in a million or better every year and the CCPD funds that we get from sales tax are not impacted by this, are not traded away in this agreement, so the CCPD would generate quite a bit more money every year.
All right, any comments or questions for Austin?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things about this deal for maybe people who are kind of confused about what's going on. This is a chapter 380 agreement. We've done this before in the city, most notably with CEMEX at the front of Jersey Village on Senate. It's a piece of legislation or state law that allows the city to use a tool called a chapter 380 to reimburse different types of taxes to a business. And so what this one would do is would reimburse this company a certain amount for employing a minimum of 15 people. We're projecting actually 25 employees, so that's 25 new jobs in Jersey Village from this. They are predicting about $200 million in sales every year. That's their average. This is an established office that's moving here, so if they maintain that average or improve, just maintain the average, the city would see about $27.5 million in revenue, sales tax revenue and CCPD. tax revenue and CCPD tax revenue over the next 10 years, with 10 million of that being crime control. It's also worth noting that this deal was brought because of our website. They actually found us, we didn't go out and find them. They found our city's plans by doing their own research, so by Austin and his staff putting the website up, making sure our deals were published and accessible to the business, they found us, and they got in touch with the city and worked within the legal confines to hash out this deal, and I think this is, I mean, it's an understatement to say this is an amazing deal for the city. We hope to do way more of these, but basically, what we can champion today is that the city will see 17.5 on average, if it goes as we think it will, 17.5 million dollars over 10 years, with 10 million over 10 years going to the crime control prevention district. So I'm sure, congratulations on that, you guys did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I will say that I was very pleased when I saw this proposal when it was first presented to us. I know when I went to my first, the Texas Municipal League Newly Elected Officials Conference, they showed a pie chart of the percentage of sources of revenue for the average Texas city, and it showed a sales tax revenue piece of the pie that was a little bigger than the property tax piece of the pie, and I knew for Jersey Village, the opposite was true. And when I saw that, I said, you know, that's going to be one of my big picture goals, I want to see this city grow that sales tax piece of the pie, so that the citizens aren't bearing as big of a burden of the city providing services, and I think this gets us a huge chunk of the way in that direction. Clearly, this is a big boost even during the agreement, and of course, once the agreement is fulfilled, it'll be a fantastic boost for our sales tax revenue, it'll be a huge boost for the Police Department. I think if I looked at the number, it was, it's going to probably increase just from the crime prevention district. I think it increases it by, what, like 50% or something like that? It's pretty close to that, or maybe a little larger than that. So that is fantastic, because it will help us to continue to maintain a fantastic Police Department, to make sure that they're well-equipped and are competitive on, you know, in terms of getting the best talent out there, and doing all of that while not putting any additional burden on our homeowners.
You know, Austin, this is, Argos is a very reputable, large company. There are several cities throughout the county and the state that offer these kinds of incentives, so I just want to make sure our citizens understand that they'd be very proud of Jersey Village. We're very competitive, but fair in this program, and we beat out several other possibilities, it'd be my assumption, I'm sure they did shopping around, and there's also a cap on their reimbursement in this particular agreement, correct? Yes.
Correct, yeah, $10 million is the cap, and they have 10 years to reach that cap.
So I, as well, I'm very supportive of this resolution. I may have used the term economic development once or twice over the last couple of years, and actually, in all seriousness, the term economic incentives, and this is one of the incentives that is at our disposal. It's been very successful for us before, and I'm excited that we have an opportunity to enter into a very similar agreement that's going to bring in, you know, in the neighborhood of over a million dollars in general fund revenue, as well as up to a million dollars in our CCPD fund. And as we mentioned about the CCPD, the CCPD is for law enforcement. We use it to provide uniforms, equipment, vehicles, and salaries, and one of the most important aspects of our neighborhood, as we've all mentioned several times, and sometimes this evening, is our Jersey Village Police Department and our Public Safety officials. And so, this is an excellent agreement, and I'm very much in support of it. I think it bodes very well for the economic future of our community, and we are going to become known as a city that encourages business, that we're going to be known as a city that works with businesses, to better the business and the community as a whole. So I'm very supportive of this resolution, I'm very supportive of this type of direction that our city undertakes, and I want to commend our City Manager and his staff for developing an agreement, and I'm very much supportive of it. Unless there's any other comments, I'm looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-52.
A second.
There's been a motion and second. Any additional comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, ending on a high note, meeting adjourned.